Okay. So starting in the beginning, we have a special recognition tonight.
We do, yes indeed we do. This is an incredibly prestigious award. The Presidential Award for Excellence in Math Science Teaching Programs. The acronym is PMS. The Connecticut State Selection Committee for the Presidential Awards of Excellence in Mathematical Science Teaching has selected our very own 7th grade math teacher from Poulsen, Melissa Harms, as a state level finalist for the grades 7 through 12 teachers of math. As I said, incredibly prestigious achievement and moves Melissa forward as one of three finalists to the National Selection Committee, which is composed of mathematics, science, engineering, and computer science educators, as well as experts in the field, and past awardees, who will meet and then select the PMS awardees at the national level. Teachers chosen to be awardees at that level are notified by the White House, receive $10,000. That is wow. And are honored at a whole slew of various ceremonies after that. This is incredibly prestigious. To state level alone to be one of three is an outstanding achievement. At the beginning, I think Melissa has a little more ways to go still, I have a feeling. She's an outstanding teacher. We are incredibly fortunate to have her here on our staff. And I wanted to congratulate Melissa. And we have a couple of friends here as well to support her. Our current principal, Mrs. Hart from Poulsen, and the program coordinator, you've all seen a number of times for mathematics, Carol Sullivan. So can I start with a little round of applause? So, did you want to make any comments on Melissa's behalf?
I'll say a few words, because I actually first met Melissa when I was a math teacher at Brown, down in one of the rooms down here, and Melissa was a special education teacher working in my classroom. And she said, "I'm going back to school, I want to be a math teacher." And she did. And as soon as she snapped up right away to go to Poulsen to teach math, very well deserved. I'm lucky to now be starting on a new adventure with her and working with her at Poulsen now at 7th grade. My own children have had her as teachers, it's been absolutely phenomenal. And she absolutely deserves this recognition. I'm proud to say that I work with her and I look forward to many more years together.
I don't even add to that. I concur.
This is on behalf of the board. Congratulations, we're so lucky to have you in the district. I, my children as well, have had you as their teacher and they're just inspiring, energetic, and really bring so much to the classroom. It's lovely to have you, congratulations.
Thank you so much. Thank you for having me tonight.
He will update us, he along the way, I'll update the board and so forth, so best of luck.
Thank you, hopefully we're not waiting two years to hear. Hopefully it's a yes, not wait that long.
And Melissa said this will take up to two years.
What's involved in the process from here on out?
From here on out? I said I feel helpless now, because it was months to put the application together and videotape and write and rewrite and write and rewrite. I teach math for a reason. So it was a long process to put everything together and to get help from everybody and have people write letters of recommendation. And I submit the whole package and then that's it. Now, I feel like now I need to like up the game and do something else to prove myself, but now it's wait.
Just keeping you.
This is the hard part.
Well, do keep this close, it's exciting.
Thank you.
Public participation, is there any member of the public who would like to speak? Welcome back to our student representatives, Jackie, and welcome to Eric. This is your first meeting with us, right? So welcome, thank you so much for being here. Do you have a report for us?
School started last Tuesday, so yeah, it's going good so far. Rail's high, having a good time. Our first pep rally will be Friday, so seniors will have their senior picnic and then at the end of the day, all the grades come together in the gym, we'll have our pep rally, get everyone kind of rally up. Football game later that night, so we're very excited.
Roll call Friday morning?
Yes, wake up call.
Wake up call.
We got the band marches around the hallways, get everyone all excited. It's a good time.
Great.
I'm most interested in Eric being here because he's a hobby. There's a lot of things, he's in robotics and everything, but he'd be able to hobby at conferences. It's great to have you here.
Welcome.
So while Gail's gonna boot up here, I'm gonna just do a brief update of the opening of school and then we'll dive into the strategic plan update. So we, as Jackie, good night, thank you. As Jackie pointed out, school has started and we're off to a great start. We have moved hundreds of teachers and students across the district and very successfully landed Softly. From transportation to food services to technology and networking, to new assignments, to new rooms, to materials and classroom libraries. I would say at this point right now, we're in excellent shape. And this is the last reconfiguration update from the chart that we had created, it was two years ago now, that it is official and the district is in great shape right now. We had a lot of new bus routes and I let the board know that we had to work on some cases first day or two. Those did work out and we're in very good shape on the bus front. Our security initiatives are just about in place right now. I think I told the board that we had unfortunate lightning interruption that got in the way of some cabling for our campus shield power program up at the high school. They anticipate by end of month we'll be up and running there. A number of communication initiatives have begun and have gone out and lots of the analytics, the communications committee, I'm sure Emily can fill the board in on that. But all in all, we're off to a great opening and excited to start here.
Great.
The next item, while Gail is booting up here, I will kind of frame this for the board. So when the board had adopted a district vision statement back in 2012-13, we then spent a couple of years doing some of that work and then coming up with a strategic plan thereafter. The initial impetus for the strategic plan, we need to cover the model. Back in 2015 and 16, I was trained in the Harvard Business Model of the Balanced Score Card, which is the model that we had adopted here for this plan. We formally adopted the plan in 2018, May of 2018, and came up with nine outcome, actually eight outcome measures. And a ninth one was added through board input last year, which is on here, it's a biennial measure. We want to spend tonight just doing an overview and really allowing the board a chance to digest a lot of information and then spending time circling back in two weeks that we can look a little clearer and a little more deeply at the plan itself. So, you know, I'm wondering if that are, how do I do this? I'm out of my element, not in the am o, that's okay.
I'm sorry. Do you want to go to the next?
Well, no, I think stay right there. So just to start off with, without belaboring the actual vision statement, what we endeavored to do was to come up with a system that would take the aspirations of the vision statement and then find a way to come up with, we're a mission-based organization, find a way to come up with a way to kind of measure the progress towards those standards. So we're gonna focus largely tonight in the stakeholder piece. And if I can just break this one graphic down very simply. Outcome measures are baked into these three stakeholders. And then all of the indicators over here, oh, sorry, the strategic objectives here are process measures. So how are we doing the work is from this line down and how are we doing is up top here. So in order to accomplish that, about two years ago, we started to try to get into the minds of students and parents, the community, and the board of ed. And we had to come up with a statement to really capture the overall aspiration. So in the students and parents, it was that the educational experience is engaging, values of well-being of the whole child, offers choices and really opportunities for the future. For the community, the educational system increases the value of my community. And for the board of education, we are an educational leader, forward-thinking, high-achieving. So within each of those, we had to come up with two or three outcome measures. We have three for each right now and we're getting that in second. And then below here is what the team does, what the district does, the work of the district to achieve the stakeholder outcomes. Gail, can you please? So we tried to gray this out for the purposes right now, we'll get into that. But what we're gonna do tonight is just begin, you have this all in your documents, and as I said, I want to keep repeating, we'll come back to this in a couple of weeks, this is just an overview tonight. We have our measures that are summer annual, summer biennial. So right at the top there, S1, which is students and parents. We have the, some data from Naviance, which gave us an indication of our graduation rate at the college level. We conducted our first biennial alumni study. And then in opposite years, this year, we'll do our graduating seniors exit survey. Under S2, we have data on the legacy students who have actually enrolled, which is a pretty interesting measurement. Probably the biggest one we did this year is the biennial parent satisfactions survey, a lot of data to go in there. And then this year, we will do our first pass at a community feedback survey. And then three measures under S3 are the SAT, ACT, AP, ECE scores, unweighted GPA, and then we wanted to get into our performance assessments, which are all over our system, and get at the primary outcomes, student outcomes in the vision statement. So we're gonna go through those one by one. Before I do that though, any questions before we dive into that? There are none, we'll go forward.
Want to go into how we collected the data?
Oh, I'm sorry, Gail, yeah, can you do that?
So we started this process in, you know, a couple of years ago, as Tommy said, and in our summer retreat of 2018, after the board adopted the Balanced Score Card or the strategic plan, we actually started to develop a system for collecting the data. And you'll see everyone represented in the admin council, as well as central office people. And we actually designated a reporting mechanism that would occur at every administrative council meeting that we held bi-weekly. So you'll see that we all had objectives assigned to us and we all had responsibilities to collect the data and also to report out on how the objective was going. You'll see in yellow, there were three times a year where we reported out on what we refer to as the big five. And those were five indicators that we felt were really pressing and indicators that we thought we would need a lot of continued work in in order to make a difference in the outcomes. So I just wanted to share that with you of what a continual shared effort that has been.
So the admin council meets every other Wednesday and every other Wednesday on the agenda is one strategic objective and updates, and that's two. And the measurements that we're talking along the way. So the admin team was kind of kept finger on the pulse, I don't know, all year long. Want to start at the top?
Yeah.
So one of the outcomes we wanted to look at as a measure of the system is not the kids graduate hands, we know that. We know that 98%, 96% go on to college. The kids finish college and at what rate do they finish college and what timeframe? So we're able to capture that information from the National Student Clearinghouse. We partnered with Naviance. High school's parents know what Naviance is. Non-high school parents, oh my god. Naviance is the primary vehicle by which we go through the college application process. Jackie knows Naviance very well, I bet. But what Naviance had done a while back is partnered with the National Student Clearinghouse. So when you become a partner of Naviance, you're assigned a unique number and they can track your progress. Have you transferred? Have you graduated within four years, five years? Have you not graduated? That's incredibly good data for a school district to be able to project out, because we, obviously a lot of variables go into that, but we do feel responsibility in saying we prepare our kids for the graders of college and beyond, and college completion. So the class of 13 and the class of 12 are the two that we're highlighting here. Anything after 13 would be a shorter timeframe for us to be able to track. So this is the most recent class, as you can see, and Gail just jumped in if I'm saying anything incorrect here, but 83% in four years have attained their degree. Correct? Okay? And then you can see the, you know, in the other years there. Prior class of 12, 65% in four years, you can see the five-year rate there as well. Some other high schools that I've talked with or worked along the way have looked at just capturing the five-year rate, having that gap year consideration as well, which has gone more popular for some kids. But we wanted to capture the four and five and see, and we can present this data any way and we can also circle back to this down the road. Any questions on this outcome measure?
Yeah, Tom.
Yeah?
The data are adjusted if someone takes a gap year.
It just tracks.
If somebody takes a gap year and finishes in four years, then goes into the percentage of completion in four years.
I think it's, I think that's a five-year. I could double check, Kirk, but I'm pretty sure that it says, you graduated in 13, did you get your degree in 17? That's four, 18 is five, and beyond.
And this is your bachelor's degree?
That's what I'm saying.
It's a four-year degree. Some people do it in five years.
Right.
Yes, that's true.
Tom, are you surprised by the difference, the delta, in between the class of 12 and 13 in terms of graduation rate? 65 versus 83?
No, we didn't put a ton of thought into why those two classes would have been different. When I, when I look at the five years together, that number gets a lot closer. You know, if you look at, I kind of looked at this as the pie chart, it just was provided us in the four-year.
Question to suggest, for the class of 2013, it might be easier, it might be more useful to represent this for the six years or the seven years or more as, rather than 0%, I assume TBD, because it might not be clear that there have not been enough years to, for anybody to have achieved that yet.
Oh, that's a great point.
It's not really 0%, it's more NA.
If you're looking at the class of 2008, then obviously you can capture that, but it's a short window.
Yeah, I wouldn't necessarily put a zero there.
That's a great point. So I think what's, Gail, can you go back one more time? So I think what's important for us is, and this is, you know, the most honest that Gail and I could be honest with you. We set out to create a strategic plan based on this model. This is the first pass at what we are presenting as the data. So the feedback's helpful, we've never reported this data before. One of the things we want to answer is this valuable information for us. Does it give us, you know, getting back to that first outcome, stakeholder one, is it giving us a good indication of what we're trying to capture? So in alignment of the plan, don't be shy to go back to that one sheet chart of all strategic objectives. We also have a definition for that, that we have adopted along the way as well, so.
Yeah, do we monitor what happens to the folks that don't go on to college?
We don't, if they haven't registered with Naviance and have a unique identifier, then we don't track those. We tried through an alumni study and you'll see that our efforts were full in comparison to the parent satisfaction survey. We'll get into that shortly. That's the other approach that we use. But if you graduated and were not enrolled in Naviance or in college and so forth, then you may fall off of our.
So then this is only if students who went to college?
98%, though.
Okay, yes.
Well, that's a loose number, you'll see, Gail, it could be as low as 94, 95, but it's a high number that are signed up to this their senior year, because our intention for four years is kind of a high rate.
And how about if they would go on to a school like having a senior home, like the school that just opened anyway, where they do the two-year degree and the technical. No, not Gateway at Seattle and stuff. All right, we're each having a senior home, it's ongoing. I'm more entitled than you. But in any event, if they were to go on and get a two-year degree, would that somehow be captured here?
So we can dive in deeper, because Naviance tracks the type of school as well. We did not do that for the purposes of this, but we could. As again, our numbers, as you'll see in a second, are largely commitments to four-year in the 90% range. So it's a smaller demographic, but I'm pretty sure we can track that through Naviance.
But I do think the next slide will offer some information in that regard.
I'm sorry, I made a mistake.
What information are you seeking to draw from this slide?
So I'm not gonna call y'all for being late. No, in all seriousness, we're looking tonight at just our stakeholder outcomes.
I will not. Getting a reputation.
So we go back to the conversation retreat, Tom. I'm gonna call Tom now. Tom made a point to reference outcome metrics. So and then I mentioned that in the strategic plan, we have nine. This is one of the nine. Each of our stakeholder outcomes, so we have a stakeholder outcome for parents and students, one for the board, one for the community. We came up with a statement for each of what we believe was, thank you Violet, really up top here. What would be their highest aspiration and then how can we measure that? So it's our first pass at trying to measure that. So when you look at parents and students, that we have a system that creates opportunities and choices for the future, then college graduation rate in the four or five-year window might be a good indication.
Yeah, the only thing I would, and the reason why I asked to set up my cautionary.
Like a lawyer.
Division here, is that, and one thing that may help to explain the big disparity in four-year graduation rates versus five, four and five between class of 12 and class of 13, is I'm not sure this pure number analysis would be the only way you would measure that, because I think part of what this explains this disparity is through the Great Recession, a lot of kids were staying in school longer because there weren't as many jobs available. Over the last couple of years, and only into the last year or two, were more jobs available. And also, kids now are trying to accelerate their education, get out quicker, because the loan situation is being untenable. So there could be a lot of distracted variables.
So you know I always say, behind heavy, data point is the story. You're starting to tell the story here, there could be a variety of stories, I'm sure that could be even tell.
I have a question. So the Naviance one isn't that put into place, because this information, my kids graduated from here, they didn't have that.
Naviance has been in the district, I don't know, but my understanding, it's been for quite a while.
It wasn't.
Maybe not, maybe not when your kids were, I could find that.
And even when it first came on board, it wasn't really used, SAT still did most of the major tests.
So this, this is something that Naviance partnered with the National Student Clearinghouse, I'm gonna guess four or five years ago, I don't know, and that's how they have to use this data, but I could find that.
And it was at least 2008, when Poulsen was a senior. Could have been before that, but we access.
A regulation.
My kids didn't, they graduated all just in there.
That's good to know.
Yeah, the next slide may be helpful though. Jackie, oh, I'm sorry.
I was just gonna say, is there any way you track, like how many kids drop out after those go to college?
Great question. So not only that, Jackie, but transfers. And that is something that has really piqued our interest, because there is a bit of an undercurrent, as two students, maybe you can relate, there's a bit of an undercurrent, and I'm not big on anecdotal information, I prefer to have focus groups and surveys, you know, to kind of color the picture. But some of the undercurrent is that students make choices in higher achieving affluent communities, largely driven by maybe legacy from parents, you know, where their parents went or their parents' influence. And is that an indication with high numbers of transfers and so forth, that, you know, dropouts, that there was a misstep in preparing kids to make a good choice? Not preparing them for college, but the choice of college. So Naviance does track that as well. So we didn't, but what I'm taking notes on is we have a lot of things, and Gail and I were hoping that we could find two, some of these outcome measures, so 2.0 can color a little more of those, so thank you.
Just to circle back to one thing about the chart overall, which I think the second page does help to clarify which we're headed towards.
We're gonna get there too.
But, for sure. I think, I think the title or somewhere in here, you know, degrees by timeframe for whom and what is the percentage of the class that is here? So I would assume, I'm guessing, that we're talking about about 90% of the class based on this second page?
Yeah.
Is included in here. The students who intended to attend a four-year institution plus had a Naviance number and some other things that might be factoring people out. But it's hard to gauge between the two unless we have a sense of, in this circle, this is this percentage of the class?
Yeah.
And this circle is this percentage of the class?
Great question. We based our assumption on these two columns, odds are, are part of the Naviance, and we can get that number.
Yeah.
But that was, you know, so you can give it, Kirk, to get a better idea of where you were going. You know, so in general, about 94%, you know, over this time period, you know, we're going to two and four a year and therefore they're part of the system.
Well, I'm interested to hear, also, are two-year degrees counted here?
Are two, I believe those are not. I will double check.
So that's another, you know, four or five percent not represented in this particular circle. Yeah, but these might be lost if they don't go to a year, ever go to a four years.
Yeah, and then again, I don't know how many of those two years.
Then go on.
Also about the four years. You can think of an average point.
Right.
Okay, and then getting the stories to go in for.
Right. So, yeah, just interesting to find out.
I think it's a regular vision.
Yeah.
And I, to kind of piggyback, Jackie, your question, I'm gonna come back to it, because that is one of the concerns that we have just in further talked about, is, you know, are we happy when you cross the stage in June that we did a great job getting ready for college, but then to be really not fully deliberate that we have a high number of transfers, a high number of dropouts, a high number not completing in four or five years? That's what we really want to get to. So Gail, this is our teacher plans report?
Yeah, so one thing that did surprise me is the attending two-year colleges being on the decrease trend instead of the increase trend. With the ability for students to transfer into state four-year colleges, I really anticipated that rate would be reversed.
This should be expected, I bet that'll keep dropping.
Yeah.
The class, the demographic drop across the state means that more schools are fighting for more kids, between more four years are admitting more kids and the two years.
Are they being more generous also financially?
Yes. They need students.
Declining enrollment?
Yeah. So the longer we wait, the better the outlook looks for kids financially. Good for any parents that know and don't.
I think I missed that curve. Sadly.
Not you, Katie, not you. It's not gonna happen next year, Katie.
Okay, on to the next speaker.
Okay, on to the second one. I'm telling you, man, the parent satisfaction one may need its own night. Okay, biennial alumni study. I will file this under great idea, great effort, and not a great result. Not in so much the reporting back, but the response was 7%. You know, and we really, we've worked with a vendor called Amplitude, who actually I've used in the past in Weston, and they get a great return rate and they've had in the past. We tried email, we tried, and Wendy knows, how did we try to deliver the data for demographics? 7% response rate. So nah-huh. We really were shooting for 20, we were hoping for. We had three different classes we were looking at, which was a class of 13, 15, and 17, so disappointing in that regard. Want to go back to the drawing board. And Violet, actually, I think your measure that we added when we finally adopted the plan is probably gonna be where we're gonna stake our claim around the exit survey, probably will be better than an actual alumni survey like this. We can talk about it. Yes.
Get the surveys, fill them out.
Yeah. So, Gail?
Quick question?
Yes?
Are these results statistically significant?
7%? We, you know, we don't feel so.
No.
We really don't. The parent satisfaction survey is 1,500 parents and over 32% responded. That's incredibly significant. I mean, that's like rock solid, 7%. So very disappointing in that regard.
So we'll go pretty quickly through this, because I think that, you know, all things considered, we don't have a very good sampling, but I won't read the questions for you. It's pretty much overall satisfaction is the first one. Second one is preparation for the challenges and demands of college academics. The next question is, did the experience provided you with many choices and opportunities for the future?
And one of my criticisms of surveys is largely could be used on that next one. Well, that's a big one, is it could be slanted, but also, they have something to say, and it could be positive or negative, but the, no matter how we frame the questions, that 80% number kind of held on everything. So it was hard to find outliers, and I think with the sample size, even the parent satisfaction survey, it was tricky in that regard, but it definitely provided data.
So this one, I think in context with some other indicators, is a little bit more interesting. If you look at the bars overall, the blue is a positive response, where yellow's, you know, kind of indifferent, and red is in the negative. So, or disagree is yellow, sorry. So if you look at where the yellow So if you look at where the yellow bars are largest in this small sampling of students, it would be recognizing and further developing talents and strengths, helping them to explore areas of interest, and also providing support and resources that I needed. And I'm just, you know, tuck that in the back of your mind, no matter how insignificant the responses were, because that will come up again. This particular one was, was really about confident about their future, and that was really interesting to us. We wanted to probe a little bit if they weren't confident about their future. We wanted to know why. So whenever we ask an open-ended question, we try to give you a sampling of typical responses in that category. So some of those responses were, that they were applying to med school, and they had no knowledge of five-year programs due to high school guidance and career counseling at that point, and also attributing their success to family support and encouragement, but also were confident because it's hard to get a job. So those were some of the themes. This one's about, you know, how do you feel about your time as a student, very general. And this one was one we asked of parents as well. If you were talking to someone who was relocating their family, would you recommend Madison Public Schools?
Who's this taken?
This is, this is...
This is Nick.
Yeah.
Good. Nick?
I do like the questions.
How did you find the job?
How'd you find it?
From, you have to remember, the respondents were from several years of graduates.
Yeah, I, I like the questions.
I'm sorry?
I think the parents' questions like the questions.
Oh, okay. You were hopefully getting that.
But, but there might be, there might be a way to get at this differently, we'll get out to a backseat, draw a board. The administrative team developed the questions over the course of maybe three or four meetings, and, and we did thank you for that, Violet, because we do like the questions, just getting that audience is, is tricky, really.
I think it might be helpful to add a qualitative question about their personal experience during their high school years.
What?
I mean, there's an overall, how did you, you know, considering everything, what... Yeah, but it's not, no. Yeah, it's hard to ask.
So, that was S1, which is targeted for the parents and students. Now, if you recall, and we can get this for you again, there's a definition written, you know, for all of our objectives here. This year, we'll be crafting a biennial graduating seniors exit survey, Jackie, okay? So that exit survey will put together to target, again, that outcome, and we can talk about that at the next meeting. Under the next objective, the educational system increases the value of my community. So, yeah.
Why wouldn't we only do the exit sur... Why wouldn't we do the exit survey every capacity?
It's, these are, these are heavy, heavy lifts, you know, and we have to look at the, how can we actually do this in a more efficient way? This was a significant model.
There's also school climate surveys that we send out, and there's also the ASICS survey from Madison Youth and Family Services, so we have lots of surveys that aren't included in the scorecard that we also send out.
Survey fatigue? So this year, Kirk, every other year, we do a survey of every high school student, which is probably about an hour, the Madison Youth and Family Services one that you do, the attitudes and dispositions, you know, healthy behaviors and so forth are made. That's online, and that's, it's going to be all online this year. That's a pretty in-depth survey. The school climate survey is one that happens by law, every other year as well.
This one was really interesting and kind of surprising, and I have to give credit to Ching, who thought of how to collect this data. We wanted to know how many legacy families were enrolled, and...
Before we do that, though, let's go back. This is about the community.
Right.
So how does a community arrive to the, how can we help the community arrive to the assumption that we're increasing the value? Well, are our parents loving the experience for our kids? That's a great one, so the parent satisfaction survey. The community feedback survey, ask them directly, ask them the question directly. And this one, we're trying to find three data points for each, and as Gail said, very, very quirky one, but we thought interesting.
So this is baseline information because we just took it on a consensus verification. So you can see that 41% of our pre-K students are, are legacy parents, legacy families.
It just popped off the pages first. By legacy, we define that, by the way, as either you, one of the guardians had attended Madison Public Schools.
But the data is pretty clear, speaks for itself.
Chris Switzer's probably...
Or the Sandors.
Sandors too, I know.
No pressure.
The next one, if you thought those first two pie charts were going to bomb the board down, the next one was a lock here, a real lock here, and we're very, very excited about the return rate. So 1,558 parents were surveyed, 31.5%, 490 parents, this is a legit sample size, I mean, this is rock solid data here. Very, very happy, kind of gets beyond, you know, the concern of the ax to grind, or, you know, this is legit. We're very confident in the, in the, in the race here, so I'm going to filibuster while Gail's answering.
Sorry, sorry.
It's okay.
I was just wondering, the, the, the ser... How, did we not ser... With 1,558?
Yeah.
We not survey everybody, we see, so she's just playing a multiplication game.
Yes, that's right. Yeah, that's it, because we have like 2,600 kids, so what's the... And not, by the way, it's important to note that a lot of people like avoid, like, they question for a random reason, so it's a little quirky, we have 490, and 440, and 470 unanswered, so but the, the folks that engage with it is an incredibly high rate. You know, most interested in this feedback, because I think this is something that we need to look at in a more, I think, in-depth manner. Thank you.
So there were quantitative questions as well as qualitative, and we'll go through how we approach this. This is a survey company that analyzes the quantitative stuff. So you'll see the question is overall satisfaction, which you also saw on the student one, and you could see 87%, which is roughly the same response. The other question is choices and opportunities for their future. Quirky, 87%. And again, if someone asked if you would, how likely you would be to recommend Madison Public Schools, again, it was 87% affirmative. So in addition to that, we had this series of questions that also mirrored the student survey. And interesting to note, again, if you kind of target the larger yellow bars, there is an indication about helping my child recognize and further develop their talents and strengths, a little bit about support and resources for their needs, and again, proportionally, we're stop, we're talking proportionally speaking, they're not overwhelmingly high indicators, but there's another piece about keeping me informed about my child's performance, and there was more information in the open-ended questions about some of these responses that also helped us clarify. But overall, again, in the eighties, pretty much overall.
So this was probably one of the... This floor just pick its pin, but maybe tomorrow, a little dusty. Coding the actual open-ended responses was a heavy, heavy lift. There are strips of paper all over Gail's office. We then had Wendy go in to verify and kind of serve as a backup for us to make sure that we're accurate. I looked at them, we wanted to make sure we were able to kind of group the open-ended responses, so we got some themes. Otherwise, you're just in a sea of information and not making sense of it. So if we have a response, can we kind of stamp a theme on it and wrap them together? And that's where Gail's going to kind of dive into how we did that and what that tells us.
So again, just in this piece, we tried to also look at the stakeholder outcomes and look at our survey and how it was designed, and whether or not it informed any of the stakeholder outcomes. So that's the way the admin team worked to put those samples in there. So these are more of the...
So the questions, sorry, Gail, can you go back? So the questions are obviously not sequential. We looked across all the survey and grouped them and regrouped them under the stakeholder outcomes. So 83, you know, percent of the parents strongly agree with the district helps their child grow socially, for example, so you can just, in your own time, this was really meant to given over to you tonight, and we ask you to dive into, in these, these measures.
Yeah, just for the future, there's software that does this.
I, I heard that, and we didn't pay for that, Kirk, but doggone it, we're going to next time.
I have one.
Wendy's saying, "Thank you."
I did have one. I did my presentation.
Yeah, that would have been de-qualitative, de-qualitative.
Yeah, you literally plug in all the questions and it will work.
Oh, my God. That would have been great.
There's a strip of paper.
Yeah, a strip of paper, it's not a way.
Wendy and I enjoyed so much of this.
We're post-it notes, we'll not know.
It's incredible.
Can I ask about, can I ask about your reaction to, you know, question four, which has a lot of sub-questions, the, the agree or disagree section? So I'm, I'm surprised about...
I'm sorry, which one are you...
No.
This one?
Lots of lines. So question four, I'm surprised about the high, high and the low items here, so not, I'm pleasantly surprised by the 90% agreeing provides a safe and comfortable environment for learning, because I think environment is a tricky thing to figure out, and that's, that's a real good sign, right? But then 76%, and I'm surprised by this, given the way we approached it, though, agreeing that helps my child recognize and further develop talents and strengths. So any reaction to...
Yeah, before you begin, my first reaction is, this is exactly why I don't like surveys. I was out of focus for that one.
Yeah.
And dive in deeper with, do we all understand what the same question, do we all have the same definition of question? So, and that's my initial reaction to it, but, Gail, go ahead.
Yeah, so we saw the same thing in the alumni survey, same statement and same kind of distribution roughly in the bar. And I think my talents and strengths are a pretty broad brush stroke, right? So it can be helping me to recognize my talents in the arts, my talents in some other interest areas that maybe we didn't offer in some components, but also in some of the open-ended questions, some of those, same kind of ideas came up, and I tried to represent those with some of the quotes, so you might be interested in some of that as well.
Another thing I wonder, too, is that, this is what I was just saying, at the secondary level, we are so focused on the college track, and do we have more than 10 or 15% of parents that are saying, we want to broaden the horizon?
I saw the, I scanned through the comments, I saw the comment that says, "The future is robots. Train students to repair robots."
Yes.
Yeah, a specific response to these questions. It's just interesting.
The, the comments are always interesting because as many as you get in one direction, you can get as many comments in the other direction. You know, it's to this, it's not enough this.
And the comments out of all the responses to the survey is a relatively low, low number.
It is.
Two, right?
It is.
So it's more anecdotal.
So you may see, even when we put up a number and says, we have 20 comments on this topic, that's at a 490.
Right.
It's almost, you know, not even specifically...
I mean, I'm glad, I'm glad you included that.
Yeah, yeah. And there are some that aren't included because they were irrelevant to this...
I apologize if you answered this question. Of the 490 parents?
Yeah.
That responded here, these are parents who currently have students?
Current.
No, okay.
Current, right. Current K-12, so as of May 1st, we'll say, when the survey went out, you had to be a current student. You may have had some graduates, but you were currently enrolled.
It's, I mean, we could ask them, there are questions in different groups if we have the time to go, but if you ask parents for students who have since graduated on that question, we got 76%.
Yeah.
I'm going a little far afield, but one of those measures in college, I'd be interested, how many of our students, I think this is Jackie's question?
Yeah.
How many of our students survive freshman year of college? That's the number one rating that so many colleges locate is freshman and sophomore retention. That tells you a lot about resiliency, their ability to predict futures. So if you ask your parents, how well did your student do in the sophomore year, that might give you a little gold, or not.
Yeah.
Do you have a chance? That's a good one.
Well, survival's important too.
Are we in debate, still in debate?
So I'm not going to read all of the responses, but you'll see that proportionally, they go, they rank from the most responses in that category to the least amount of responses in that category.
And I think to Katie's point about the number, I mean, even 66 is decent.
Right.
But it's got a 490.
Right.
All under that one category, it's good information, but it's not.
Well, it suggests that people are interested in social emotional, right?
You get some 20, 70, 6, 2, it just is not as informative.
Greg, you know, like, if I were, and it's hard not to read into things, but, you know, this particular comment, the first one, is about cultivating a sense of diversity in students, both in learning style and also life skills, kind of that life skills. There was another one about stress management, that was definitely a theme that's on our parents' minds, and also about preparing kids for college, but also balancing that with stress and anxiety awareness. So stress definitely was one of those themes, I don't think surprising to anyone, based on what we know about the world. Areas of knowledge, you know, there's definitely that sense of robotics, STEM, the idea of helping kids to kind of find their passion, but also this idea of, here's the core knowledge that they should know. So sometimes it was just a list of science, computers, math, world history, which you can imagine, you know, is, is pretty normal. There was also, you know, 45 people who were very much about more of global thinking, talking about debate, respectable debates, freedom of speech, STEM research, but also this idea of the arts and collaboration and communication, and also the ability to apply or transfer those things. 25 people were very concerned about kids being curious, wanting to learn, having zest for learning, and having space to be able to pursue their interests. 16 respondents were interested in more executive functioning, the idea that workspaces are becoming more independent and, and functioning more on your own ability to stay organized and on task. And interestingly enough, the work at the high school that we've started to do around intervention, we actually targeted some freshman work with our incoming freshmen around scheduling and how to keep track of your calendar and time management. So that was something that I'm pleased to say that we're really looking at at the high school. Few respondents interested in life skills, but definitely that I, that theme of economics, being responsible about banking loans, independence, get out of my basement ready, right? And then there were onesies, smaller themes that, you know, just if there was more than one, I, I did the count and just put them there.
It's, it's tough to quantify, you know, we all live in the community, so it's tough, you can ask questions and comments, but I think this gives us, 490 respondents, gives us a good dipstick, you know, measurement into what are the themes that we want to focus on. So who is the quiet majority that might not be, you know, on a ball field or at a stop and shop, who might not have the nexus to the people in this room? This gave them a voice, and we're able to put a number on it. So I think that's something that we want to make sure that we pay attention to. There could be a certain number of folks interested in social emotional that maybe got a chance to weigh in and didn't get a chance to pass, and that was probably the largest one that we saw for open-ended. Open-ended, to me, indicates a commitment. You're kind of all in, really filling out the, I mean, clicking surveys is one thing, and I've got a number of them. When you start to go into open-ended, there's a level of commitment there, I think is something we need to pay attention to.
Can I ask about these overall? So how public will this be?
It's on, it's on...
No, I mean, the, the individual results.
It says confidential.
This, this mean what's on the document you have?
For example, like this?
Yeah.
Will this be publicly posted?
We haven't really talked about it, it could be. What we talked about originally is that, this was back before we adopted it, that we would not be necessarily broadcast of all the process measures, because it's getting such insider baseball.
Yeah.
But the headlines here, we definitely wanted to put on with the strategic plan because it's an annual review, so we thought that would be really important.
I think, I think the, I mean, this, this, this looks really good, so I'd probably buzz that, but also, also...
Thank you, Charlie.
I think, I think if you're asking students or parents or the community to fill out a certain... But also, also, I think, I think if you're asking students or parents or the community to fill out a survey, I would expect that we post the results. Not the, not the comments part, probably.
That was exactly, that was precisely what we did, yeah.
The data part of it, so people can circle back and say it there. The thing I'll say about that too is that I would be careful, like when you're on the measures section, to name the survey the exact same thing here as what you took through to, because that's almost never the case here. It's, you know, it's like a word off or something like that. Because I was just looking for which one we were on, and even those names are, yeah. So if somebody's searching for something in particular. Yeah, the hyperlink itself has a different name than the.
You mean which, that's strategic objective?
No, for example, like on measures, it says, it says biennial alumni survey. And here it says, Madison Public Schools, Daniel Hand High School Alumni Survey Results, which is obviously the same thing, but like.
Sure.
It's a new one, great.
So we definitely thought that the outcome measures, I remember actually, Happy's not here, but she was the one that I remember put on the table, that the process measures are less, it's kind of back, back door. But the outcome measures, we definitely want there, there's a lot of data there. So you do it in a way that makes sense. High charts work.
Yep.
Bar graphs work. So you want to get to the next measure?
Sure.
So the community feedback survey, she's going to the SAT, AP, ECE. The community feedback survey here will be this year, along with the exit survey.
So here we did some discussion around the SAT results. Just an interesting point that we discussed, I think, last time we met, is that the information that you see here on the English Language Arts Survey compares Madison to DIRD-B, which is our economic associates in the state and the state of Connecticut. And something that happened this year was the schools that were top of the DIRD, of which Madison was one of, one of the top five in the DIRD, and near the top of the state, lost approximately the same amount of points in the ELA administration across the board in the top five. So that was in districts that were compared Avon, Greenwich, Guilford, Madison, and Simsbury. So that was unique to ELA. I don't have an explanation for that, but it did happen across the board. Yeah, it's interesting. Mathematics, again, here's our scores compared to the reference group from the state. Here's our AP exams. And it's really important to note that there's something to pay attention to in AP exams. In the Accountability Index for high schools, they are taking into account the amount of students who take and pass AP exams. So that counts into the Accountability Index. And that is.
Can you repeat that? Sorry.
Sure. In the Accountability Index for high schools, one of the data points is the amount of students who take the AP exam and get a three and above for the AP exam. And that's prompting some school districts to do a few different movements around AP. Some school districts are asking or making sure that kids who enroll in an AP class take the AP exam. That's increasing their numbers. Other school districts are making sure that they're paying for the AP exam. So all students are expected to take that exam. In the future, the kids who are economically disadvantaged will have their AP exams paid for. So that's on the horizon.
Gil, is there any, I should prepare this, any districts that withhold credit if you don't take the AP exam?
I don't know that.
I don't either. No, I don't think so either.
But that's kind of interesting. Now, there's also a group of districts that have asked the state to consider the amount of courses that are ECE courses, which are UConn courses, because those courses are not counted into the index, into the Accountability Index. And they too are college-level courses.
So this is hard for us, because the state concocted an Accountability Index, which gives you points for AP exams. I think, Jackie, maybe you're going to test, most kids will go towards ECE courses. A lot of kids will take ECE at hand as kind of their choice. So that becomes a bit of a, we're not getting credit, it's a college-level course then, so.
So here's, this is just more data on the AP exams, comparatively speaking.
I have a question on the AP exam. Are students required to take them? If they know the AP, they don't have to take them?
They do not. They do not have to take them. So, objective one. We allow the kids to take AP courses if they're motivated to work on. They do not have to take them.
I also think a generation ago or two, the ability to get AP credit was, or get college credit for your AP exam was much more in play than it is now.
It was the only way to get college credit.
It's less likely. We're now with ECE courses. That's a real, unless a kid graduated 15 years from ECE.
I know.
This is really interesting. This is our ECE program. Not only how many courses we offer, and at last count, we were in the top 10 in the state offering ECE courses, but if you look at the year 2018-19, in fact, in seven of our courses, 100% of the kids passed that exam. So the passing rate is very strong.
This is something that I think the entire community should look back on and be very proud of, that before all of us were in this room, the board, the district made this a priority. And we have a ton of kids performing at very high levels on UConn courses while they're at our high school. So when you look at the measures that were chosen for this specific stakeholder outcome, they were, at the time, two years ago when we devised this, what is the end of the journey look like? So we looked at college admissions takes, SAT, AP, ECE, the GPA. That's where we staked our claim, where we devised it. So again, this is a review, first annual review, it can change, but that's, I want the rationale to be clear to the board. And this was one of the primary measures we looked at.
Is that Mandarin?
Yeah, I guess. Yeah, that's Mandarin, correct?
Yes, it is Mandarin.
Do we no longer, do Mandarin, because we have a 91 to a 73?
We continue to offer Mandarin. It was, when we first had Mandarin, we were the first in the state to actually hit that course.
The ECE-level Mandarin.
Yeah, ECE-level Mandarin. So we were the pilot.
It's only a couple of years old.
Yep.
I'm surprised you went down this.
Reflecting back on the SAT in the top five districts.
Yeah.
The scores dropping commensurately. I wonder if that may have something to do with the introduction of a lot of test optional admission programs in colleges? Because families feel like, maybe we're not going to pay for a test prep and see what happens. You know, worse comes to worse, you apply test optional.
You know, I can only say it's a really strange statistic when you see everybody in the top tier drop about the same anomaly. So to me, it seemed like a testing anomaly, but you know, I've got statisticians around the table that probably can address that. But I just gave Katie a couple of charts that I ran to pass around the table if you're interested in looking at.
If I could editorialize it, the SATs had quality control problems. So for instance, the last test was given on August 24th. Typically, if you miss 10 questions, you get a 700 in reading, let's say. Kids who missed 10 questions the last test got a 640 or 650. Typically, if you miss two or three questions in math, you'd get a 770-ish, really high. Kids who missed two or three got a 720. So it's, it should not vary from test to test. And so my conjecture is that quality control problems with the maintaining the consistency. Who knows? I mean, you know, they floated the Accountability Index, the Adversity Index, and they dropped it. So they're just.
That was very confident.
All over the place. Yes, right, right. So I don't think it's a, I think it's less reliable than it used to be.
This, this one is, the chart that I'm passing around is for the Connecticut Administration of the SAT. So that's the, that singular day or two days.
And to piggyback though on Tom's comment, sophomore, right, so success crush for the year. It's been widely, widely recognized now that SAT is second to high school GPA when it comes to predictive value of performance for freshman year. So that's why, actually why we chose one of our measures, GPA, because that's been a measure that has been, I think Tufts did the biggest study on that one, to look at what was the most predictive, if you could pick one, which you're really silly to pick one. But GPA was highly predictive and very, 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 I should say, than SAT. Of course, you do always take the performance assessment.
This is the ACT. However, we don't have the new data for the ACT. We only have up to 2018. There was a late administration of the ACT, so they haven't given us our composite scores. That's not new. And, I have to ranch.
ACT is actually, the numbers are pretty staggering. That's a high level trend. Yeah, national.
So this, Tom had mentioned GPA.
This was an important measure for us, because as I said, the literature had shown that GPA was most predictive of college performance freshman year. So Gil and her team went back to 14, 15, and you can see the slopes in the graph.
Some deviations. So very tight data on GPA. This is unweighted, by the way, so we take, we strip out the weighting. And our, our final outcome is around the 21st century capacities that the board's probably very familiar with, I know. These are embedded into every unit that we adopt. They're also assessed in every unit we adopt. This is talking more about those global issues that the parent survey was interested in, how we help kids to prepare for beyond factual information applying to unique situations.
And these live in our performance assessments that every unit has that the board proves.
So these are the various disciplines and the numbers of units that address each one of these topics and ideas. And this is just taking a slice of analyzing in ELA. And it's important to note, this data isn't exactly neat, because some assessments are given in Unit 1 that are using the analyzing rubric, and some are in Unit 4 or Unit 5 in various grade levels. But it does show definitely a lot of meaning and exceeding on analyzing. And the analyzing rubric is on our district website. In addition to that, here's mathematics. And again, it doesn't show which ones are which units.
I think the, the rubrics on the curriculum website can be applied to any, any content area and any grade level.
So I just want to show you one little slice of something that, these are the, the other measures are all in gray down at the bottom. They also have links to data.
Yeah, just one second. So way back when, we created a theory of action around the work. And it was largely based on the work that we're getting on, on the continuous improvement cycles. And what, one of the primary tenets there is that, especially in a mission-based system, one of the best ways to achieve high levels is to put in high-quality inputs. So the administrative team that went and designed strategic objectives, how we felt were high-quality inputs that would get at these outputs up here, not perfect. And capturing data on the performance of these not perfect as well. But just to give a background to where we were two plus years ago, and how we kind of identified these guys.
So the board has more information in their packets about these links. But just to give you a taste of how it helps us to make sense of what we might see in outcomes, here's one little tracking of extracurricular activities in our various schools. So when we're grouped around the admin team and we're looking at survey results, and we're seeing, did my child pursue their strengths and weaknesses, or strengths and interests? We also can see some comments about, prior to Daniel Hand, the amount of ability for kids to explore, both in extracurricular and also in electives. So that's helpful for us.
So thank you for your patience.
It was a lot, sorry.
If you'd like to come back at the next meeting after you digest, there's a lot there, obviously. And then we have a lot to share, if interested in any of these strategic objectives and how we try to track our progress on those inputs as well. Thank you. I have one interesting data point that I want to share before we transition out. The birth rates are very interesting in our town right now. Our five-year average calendar year from, from 2013 to 2017 is about 87. But the last two years, the birth rate average is 114.
Can we say that again?
So the birth rate average from the years 2013 to 17 is 87. And the last two years, we'd average 114. A significant jump, and we will not see triple digits except for one anomaly since 2007.
That's the recession. So making family choices based on who you come from.
2007 was the last year that we had triple digits, and that doesn't lie in with the great recession. We had one anomaly year of 2012, which happened to be a super strong standing year. And the last two years, though, would be back in triple digits averaging 114. No, I just dug this, we just actually, this was brought to my attention by my very good friend, Gus Horvath. So, yeah, he's a former demographer, and he points out these little nuances occasionally. And according to him, a third year, that would be a trend. And then he also said, you may want to consider.
Opening another school? Don't be that.
So cool, nobody's listening to Prince Harry.
This is calendar, this is council.
Yikes.
Yeah, I know. Put that out there.
I can see that on my street. My street has turned over.
Mine too.
Really?
Your state values are low enough to attract good families across the whole state.
There's only me and one person that just became a freshman in a high school that are our age. Everyone's like, in an elementary school.
Well, keep our eye on that. As long as the responding. That's right. Board member comments. I just have a couple of things. One thing, actually, and it's, I had a couple of board members ask to switch committees. You'll hear more about that. I promise that Greg and Perk would like to swap committees. We'll formalize that at our next meeting. I apologize it couldn't happen today, but because of the change of location, and this being considered a special meeting because of the change of location.
You should really be looking at Perk more than me.
I apologize. It was my bad. So we will, we will address that at our next meeting. So I just wanted to formally apologize about that. Okay, so we'll move on to committee reports, curriculum, and student development.
No report, don't be there.
Communications.
Yep, so the communication committee met tonight. We met with our new communications specialist, Zoe, who gave us an update on homework to date, including her role of one story per week for school. Has most certainly hit the ground running with a slew of fabulous outreach communication pieces to the community. She also shared with us an analytics report. She will continue to do so with the committee, which is tracking the subject of the story and the outreach, the number of likes, comments, shares, follows, engagements, really great analytic information for us to see how people are responding and engaging with the content she's putting out. So we'll continue to update us on those at our meetings. We discussed priority topics moving forward that we'll continue to work on. And it was a very productive meeting, and a lot of great work happening. End of report.
So do you have anything you want to? Welcome, and thank you. Can I go back to board member comments, except for some? So I kind of asked that we would start rotating to the different schools for some of our board members to get.
to get a hand-along to the work that's been done in the various schools over the summer and the like. So could you just update us on what has been done in this school over the summer that's new?
I think we have, was it a project, was it outside? Was it outside?
We have water damage in this room right here.
Well. So listen, I'm at you, but give us the good news.
Oh, the good news? We had a small fire here on Sunday.
The good news was it was a small fire?
Yeah, it was an outlet, no problem. No, the playground, I think, was a huge success. I think the contract that we had was, you know, was very helpful and worked with us on, you know, the staging and the starting. And, you know, I think it speaks for itself, if anybody hasn't been out there, you definitely want to go check it out.
There's videos online.
Yeah, I came here, I came here after school, for some reason, yesterday, Friday or something, and the kids are just out there out in the park.
I noticed before the meeting, we were all packed out there, we were really ready to go.
No, I think it's a huge success, I think not only for the school, but I think the community is really taking advantage of it.
And in order to accommodate younger kids, is there, is there a thing for you to do inside building? Is there?
No, I don't think so, no. No, I, I think we bought some new shelving here. I think that that's the original shelving behind you. And that's on one of our lists to redesign this facility. I think we did some temporary stuff. I think this is the only place. I don't think we bought new furniture for this school at all.
Brown's investment was largely outside. Elements we got a great deal as we see at our next meeting. Jeff reminding you, our next meeting?
Yes.
Couple of classrooms, we got to take a look, the furniture, the carpet, the painting, it feels really nice. We'll do a tour before the meeting, can I be a bit?
Yeah, we did some, there's, there's good news and bad. Good news is, it's going to be really hot. And the bad news is, I'm starting to hear now, boy, you know, you just need to see the carpet, you know, a little pan, so you need to spend a hundred.
You can't pay for HVACs.
For the boiler and every, can you put a carpet over that?
But, but those, those comments are starting to surface again.
So it's interesting because Katie and I have talked, you know, there's a lot of board members, a lot, there's a handful of board members who are pointing, sort of this two-year process, if you have a facility study, it's behind the referendum. This was a big priority of the board. On October of two thousand seventeen, when the board chose to close Island Avenue School, is that we're going to put money so that when we re-district and we re-brand, folks will come in and have a very welcoming, exciting environment. Mission accomplished. However, as my dad would tell me, when you pick up one end of the story, you also pick up the other end. You accurately describe what the other end is, and you have to make sure through those efforts and communication and my office that we are very clear that those mechanical and systems problems did not go away with paint and carpet.
And that was, since you brought it up, Ellie, the issue in the kitchen?
Yeah, so this weekend, we just had a plug that, you know, we sort of smashed against the wall and over time sort of frayed and caused smoke. The fire guys came in Sunday around noonish, it was eleven-thirty. You know, we have, we tear the wall apart just for safety, just blacked around the outlet. We changed the outlet, patched the hole up there. And the piece of equipment, we're going to take offline until we're convinced that it's okay. We'll check that out. But it was really a minor incident. And, you know, the smoke detectors worked.
That's important.
Yeah, that, that was key.
And it was a good test of our new communications effort because as, as Zoe and I connected on Sunday, social media has to let parents know to bring lunch on Monday, there's a pretty big number.
Three thousand.
Three thousand? There's only three of our kids here, so.
That's a big deal. Don't know how else to tell you to bring lunch, but they know as well.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, I happened to be in the school that, that afternoon and they said they had like three or four kids that missed the, that was it, it was pretty minor.
And we didn't advertise it, but I know I yelled before, we didn't advertise, but we were fully prepared for it in case we forgot it. Because we know that kids.
Parents actually do too.
How parents are at seven o'clock in the morning in the night, so.
On a Monday, yeah. Awesome, okay, thank you, sorry to go backwards. Facilities.
Yes.
That was my segue, I meant, I meant to do that.
All right, so we met, we had a special meeting Thursday.
That was not special, this Thursday's special.
Yeah, well, they were both, they were both added meeting, we've been having meetings almost weekly throughout the summer because we've been really trying to wind up our facilities study and facilities renewal research with the goal of trying to keep on track with proposing to the board for a vote a facilities renewal proposal, which will hopefully be at the next meeting on the twenty-fourth. And in preparation for that, we had a great, we had a great meeting on Thursday where Stacy was able to be there, Bill was there, and we were able to talk through a lot of the differences between the two remaining options on the floor, which are described as four-point-one-A-two and four-point-four-A. And so we took action on two items at the meeting. One was to adopt a statement indicating, quote, "The facilities committee is finalizing the details to propose some version of the tri-board working group's facilities option four-point-four-A to the Board of Education at its September twenty-fourth, twenty-nineteen meeting. For clarity, the facilities committee is recommending the board discontinue consideration of tri-board option four-point-one-A-two at this time." And that passed unanimously at facilities. The second thing we voted on was housekeeping. The facilities committee recommended that the director of facilities, Bill McMinn, move forward with the RFP approval process to select a vendor for the exciting solar carports project, and that also passed unanimously. And we were able to schedule a, yet another meeting for this coming Thursday, two nights from now, where we will hopefully be voting on a final proposal to move an option forward to. That's it, thank you.
Thank you. Finance.
No report.
Personnel. We're tired.
Well, the finance chair to my, my, my colleague was taken a week off. Personnel committee was busy at work.
Late, late at night.
We're, I'm happy to report, last week, September fifth, the personnel committee participated in the MACE mediation. It was an eight-hour mediation. We reached a conclusion. We all feel it was a very successful mediation. It met both our approach as a committee as well as, I would say it's consistent, certain, we're present. So we're very pleased. We signed the agreement right at midnight, September fifth, going into sixth. And we also feel fairly confident that there's good movement on the team service process as well. We'll have something reported. Fairly shortly on that.
And huge kudos to Tom Pellegrino, who gave up his birthday. I couldn't get him home before midnight to actually have a moment at home for his birthday, but thank you.
I got three, I got a long weekend ahead of me.
There we go, good.
No, it was good, it was good resolve, it was a lot of hard work.
Means you don't turn another year older.
That's it, okay, I'll take that.
Policy.
We have not met, but we do have three items on the agenda tonight, two of which are up for vote. So we have not heard any feedback about any of these three beyond what we've already heard about. So no comments from anybody. Registration for school, again, is mostly clarification, but you are looking at a vote tonight for board committees and the non-resident admission and tuition fees. We've heard a lot about it, so if there are any questions, happy to answer, but otherwise, you've seen it.
Lauren Lee's on, has not started. Audience response. Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So move.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Post abstain, motion carries. Can I have a motion to approve grade four and five steam curriculum? Oh, doesn't need a second because it came out of committee, we'll get you next one, Kirk. Any discussion? Everybody remembers that presentation? All in favor?
Aye.
Post abstain, motion carries. I need a motion to approve the solar carports project at Daniel Ham High School and pull second.
So.
And doesn't need a second, came out of facilities. Discussion? All in favor? Oh, sorry.
Where do we stand with respect to getting approval from the first selectment process?
He brings some pictures if you're interested. And boards like me have decided that they thought it was warranted some public input because you're going to be able to see them. And they felt that there wasn't enough noise to the public. Although I kept you guys up to date, I didn't really communicate much with the public or the board, other board. So Tuesday, next week, they're going to have a public meeting and review the carports. And I believe that they're going to go with my recommendation on the vendor that I've recommended or the committee recommended. I believe that they're going to make that final decision on Tuesday night.
And then is it good to come to a length?
I believe we can still make it. The two issues are, we have a tax, we've got these tax credits that the company that will benefit from it, and so will we, of course, for the fixed price for twenty years. The town's negotiating, we'll sign a twenty-year deal, we'll put no capital cost into it. We'll have a twenty-year fixed price of ten, ten-point-four cents, which will be, you know, really good for us. We'll have a twenty-year fixed rate. And I believe this is the first section, hopefully, of future sections. I want to start small, construction at a school was difficult and the timeframe is problematic because if we don't start before the calendar year, January one, we lose the tax credits. And it has to be complete and up and running by July first. Not just working, it has to be through the process and checked out and all approved. So, you know, I'm hoping that, you know, we have it done by May, June at the latest.
I would just like to add, in response to the concern of the selectmen, I am always in favor of more public process. I think that's fantastic that they took that on. I would just, maybe defensively, just mention that as, as a board, this did receive full public airing through our board. It was covered in at least two facilities committees, committee meetings. This is the second presentation we've had on it at a full board meeting that was televised. And so it has had a full airing and full public process through the Board of Education. I absolutely honor and respect the fact that maybe even a broader audience would be great and another WAC could get a public input, but I just wanted to say that.
Yeah, and I, I was more concentrating on the contract and the documents with the Board of, Board of Selectmen and more about the presence and what it looked like and making sure the Board of Education knew about it because it's going to affect the schools more than it's going to affect the town.
What's the deadline?
The deadline is we have to start by January first.
And what, what's the near-term issue in terms of contracting, is that?
Well, yeah, the, the start could just be contracting and worrying supplies. The actual construction is the really worried, that's the big concern because we have a lot of time, but we can't even back to school. So the construction is going to be a little difficult. If they have, if they can start, you know, just take over the place, it wouldn't be a problem, but they can't. So July first, it has to be not only off, it has to be operating, tested and approved by the state. Process that we have to go through for the Z-Rex.
I think we've, I think we've heard that in committee, but I would encourage this process to keep moving if we can. So that's through our liaison.
Well, but through our liaison, just very quickly, if we can just make sure that the additional process, the additional public process that, that the carport thing gets, that it be done kind of quickly so that we can get the project launched, so it can be done in time.
They committed to me that if, that if they had a week, I said a week wouldn't be a problem. And they, before we left the meeting, they committed to Tuesday night.
Yeah, we already have a date.
I anticipate them approving it Tuesday night, but I can't speak for them.
Yeah, we were a little hard on Billy, but he, he came out just fine, so.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post abstain, motion carries. I need a motion to approve the non-resident admission and tuition fees policy. Doesn't need a second because it came out of committee. Any discussion?
Quick question. What is our policy for special ed students?
All part.
Policy? Can non-resident students?
They can, it's a la carte, so if you need services, we have to track the cost of individual service for applications, I believe it's the IDA grant, the federal special education grant. So we actually have a metric where an hour of speech and language services costs X amount of dollars. So we would calculate that and do that a la carte.
And how about if a non-resident is individual?
You probably wouldn't be paying for.
Free and reduced lunch, but not, not a reduction because it's not intended to reduce the tuition.
No, it's a per pupil.
Free and reduced life, the health of the program, yeah.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Post abstain, motion carries. I need a motion to approve bylaw ninety-four fifty board committees. This is the third reading, doesn't need a second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Post abstain, motion carries. I need a motion to approve the minutes of the August twenty-seventh, twenty-nineteen Board of Education meeting.
So move. Second.
I'm giving it to Kirk. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Post abstain, motion carries. Any old business? Future gen items? Meetings and dates of importance are attached in your packet. I need a motion to adjourn. Katie, I think I'm just abstaining from the round of votes. Okay. I already have. The minutes? The minutes. Thank you. Second? To adjourn? Greg? Discussion on adjournment? No? Motion carries. Nice job.